Okay, it is now summer o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. Let's call the Johnston City Council Meeting number 24 dash, I don't have my glasses on, 19 to order. Nicole, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cope.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Burkhart.
Here.
Ready.
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Clayton, have you ever let us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I have. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we'd like to move item X on the consent agenda to the non-consent That is the approval of the Streetscape Beautification Framework Plan.
Counsel, any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Nicole, vote, please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications, we don't have any scheduled public communications this evening. We are under public communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Anybody online? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have three public hearings this evening. The first one is item 4A, Public Hearing on the Authorization of Loan and Disbursement Agreement and the Issuance of Notes to Evidence the Obligation of the City They're Under. An Approval of Resolution Number 24-240, Instituting Proceedings to Take Additional Action for the Authorization of Loan and Disbursements Agreement and the Issuance of Not to Exceed $24 Million Water Revenue Capital Loan Notes for the Northwest Salyerville Drive Water Main Extension Project. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:03. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight's public hearing has authorized the city to enter into an agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority for a not-to-exceed amount of $24 million to finance the Northwest Salyerville Drive Water Main Extension Project. It'll be segments A, B, and C, which are shown here on the map. The proceeds from this loan will be used to provide funds to pay for the cost of the design, construction, of extending and equipping all or part of the Johnston Municipal Water Supply associated with the Northwest Salyerville Drive Water Main Project segments A, B, and C. Be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, have any questions?
So are we, we're borrowing money for all three segments at one time?
No, this is, this is the first step in the process so that we can borrow the money. Basically, this just states that we have the capability to borrow the money and make those payments back. We will actually do those in separate with each segment.
Okay, okay, so this is basically just, starts us down the process, but...
Correct.
And $24 million does cover the cost of all three segments, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions for Matt? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:05. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-240?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Nicole, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Ready? Cope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4B, Public Hearing on the Authorization of a Loan and Disbursement Agreement and the Issuance of Notes to Evidence the Obligation of the City They're Under. And Approval of Resolution Number 24-241, Instituting Proceedings to Take Additional Action for the Authorization of a Loan and Disbursement Agreement and the Issuance of Not to Exceed $3.1 Million Sewer Revenue Capital Loan Notes for the Little Beaver Creek Sanitary Sewer Extension Project Segment C. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:06. Matt?
Good evening again. This public hearing is the final step in the process to authorize the city to enter into an agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority for the not-to-exceed amount of $3.1 Million. This is to finance the construction of Little Beaver Creek Sanitary Sewer Extension Project Segment C that's shown here on the map in blue. This is along Townard Drive, crosses under Highway 141 to serve the city that sits on the west side of Highway 141. This will incorporate the planning and design loan into the construction loan for Segment C, which is currently being worked into the city's capital improvement program. Little Beaver Creek Sanitary Sewer Extension Segment C will consist of both Gravity and Force Main, as well as a lift station that sits on the west side of Highway 141. The project is currently been let and is under construction, is anticipated to be completed May of 2025. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does Counsel have any questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Send anybody online? If there are no comments, we'll close the public hearing at 7:08. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-241?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Nicole, vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhart.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4C, Conduct a Public Hearing and Consider Approval of the First Reading of Ordinance Number 1125, Amending the Birchwood Crossing Plan, Unit Development, Zoning District, PZ Case 24-24. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:09. Clayton?
Good evening. In front of you tonight is ordinance 1125. This is a result of Eternity Church, who has recently acquired the former AMC Theater location on Birchwood Court and Stony Creek Court. They are looking to remodel and renovate that former movie theater, and as such, architectural changes to the exterior of the building are being proposed that would necessitate the PUD being amended to address some differences in modifying an existing building rather than constructing brand-new. Additionally, they had requested to do an interstate-oriented monument sign. There is an appeal expected to be forthcoming from the applicant in regards to that, regarding classification, as such that would go to Board of Adjustment prior to consideration by City Council if applicable. Applicant can certainly confirm or state their intentions there, but in discussion with Christine Stone, the elements relating to signage that were in the ordinance tonight would not be ripe for discussion, presuming that this would presume to an appeal with Board of Adjustment, and so those should be put on hold for the moment. We could proceed with the architecture. The applicant would like to proceed with the architecture, but not proceed with any signage-related approvals. As such, the ordinance in your packet, ordinance 1125, amended architecture, no signs, would be the appropriate ordinance for consideration this evening, since it removes out the signage elements for the property. This ordinance will also do general code cleanup to reference current zoning code chapters. The last update to the Birchwood Crossing PUD was prior to adoption of our new zoning ordinance. Since that time, reference chapters have moved locations, so it's just, really just changing the references so people know where to look in the code when there is. They don't actually impact any underlying uses. For example, previously where it said PC, Professional Commerce Park, we now call that E1 Office Employment Zoning District. Considering the signage request is expected to go to Board of Adjustment, I'm going to skip over my sections on that and focus in on architecture. Applicant has provided intended architectural elevations for the site. Bear in mind, we are not approving the actual architecture for the building, just the parameters for which it needs to be designed. In reviewing this, however, it does appear that it would be in compliance with the drafted As drafted here, the ordinance establishes a, and these changes only applied to the former AMC Theater lot. Other buildings would be subject to the current regulations or consideration by City Council. This establishes that they were recognizing the existing building is not conforming with today's standards, and we're not going to consider it non-conforming. It was conforming under the old zoning code, but we changed from 75% permanent materials to saying you have to have at least 50% Class A, no more than 50% Class B, no more than 10%, or maybe it's 15% Class C. And so, not in compliance with those, but it would be in compliance with the old code. However, anytime there's exterior modifications, those need to be brought into compliance with the current code. Get this thing out of my way. Zoom in on the, the primary changes would be on the west elevation, the front of the building. Presently, it's 11% Class A, 39% Class B, 50% Class C. With their modifications, they would reduce the Class C to 11%. The Class B would stay at 39, and then the changed materials would be put into the Class A materials. So they would be in compliance with current standards.
Clayton, I've got a question about that.
Yes.
So as I look at this, it says existing materials, and then it says new material on the elevations, the document you were just on. So existing material and new material. Does the new material refer to the planned redesign by Eternity Church? What does new material refer to?
My understanding, and the architect or the applicant can certainly correct me if I'm wrong here, but the new materials would be the after remodel, what it would be if the painted brick would still be painted brick, it may just be a different color. The glazing would still be glazing, but there'd just be more glazing.
So, so my question is, if, if under their update, if under the new update takes it to 50% Class A and 39% Class B, then shouldn't the, the, why are we still using the 11% and the 39% numbers in this, in our ordinance, or the update to the PUD?
Here the table?
Yeah.
That's saying the existing condition is, so existing right now, today, with, prior to remodel, they have 11% Class A on that west facade. We're saying, we'll consider that conforming. But anytime you do a change to that west elevation, you can only add up to 11% to the Class B materials, then everything additionally has to go into Class A, because that Class B can't get higher than 50%.
Well, it says not more than 39%.
That's just reflecting what the current conditions are as today. So the 2A there is simply intended to just reflect status quo. They do nothing.
So, but then what is the incentive for them to do something? Because we clearly, I mean, and I, I don't have a concern about what they're proposing for the, for the update to the materials, but as I read this, in essence, this basically allows them to do status quo, and they don't have to update the materials at all, because we're just saying that they can, they just have to stay at 11%, at least 11% Class A, which they're prepared to go to 39% or 50% Class A?
Yes.
So why not have it, if they're, if they're upgrading to a higher standard than this, doesn't this, why, why not have that reflected in these numbers?
So the 2B, I think, gets to what, whenever they want to do any modification, including changing the building material itself, then they have to be in greater compliance and, but in no case can they be out of compliance with the new code. So, for example, the north, east, and south presently are in excess of 50% Class B materials. They could not add any materials to Class B, they could not add any materials to Class C. If they want to do any modifications on north, east, or south, they have to make changes
Okay, so what you're saying is, is that paragraph A deals with the building as it is today?
Yes.
And if they want to add anything, add a sign, do anything to the building, which obviously they intend to do, they want to put signage on the building, then, then that, then triggers B, and that, and paragraph B is, requires them to get above the requirements in paragraph A.
Yes, signage itself wouldn't, because signage is separate from architecture, but if they wanted to change the stucco to a cement panel, then that's a change of materials. B comes into play, they would have to be in compliance. And, for example, on the north, east, and south facades, a cement panel system would be a Class B material unless it has a rain screen assembly to allow for water to get out from behind the materials. So essentially, it forces them to have to use a Class A product on those facades if they want to swap something there.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we're structuring this in a way that gets them, gets them not just to the material as it's currently, the current condition of the building, but gets to the higher standards that's in their elevation. The 50% Class A, 30, again, focusing on the west elevation of 50% glazing and rain screen, 39% Class B panelized, paneling, and split face. And I just want to make sure that this wording does allow, makes sure, ensures that happens. So I'm just, I, I think I'm trying to understand how it works. And basically, what you're telling me is paragraph B is kind of the key paragraph in requiring them to get up to at least 50% Class A?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's what chapter 185 requires.
Yeah, so David and I had worked on this, and we both feel pretty confident that it achieves the intended goal. At least that's how we always intended it as we drafted it, was that it's going to bring the building closer to, if not into, compliance with current codes.
At least on the west side.
Yeah, ideally all, but really the primary changes as they've presented them in their renderings here is on the west elevation.
Right, right, right.
And in fact, that would bring their west elevation into compliance with our base standards, so they'd be meeting requirements there.
Okay, so they, they do, the changes that they're proposing for the west elevation bring them in compliance with chapter 185?
Yes.
Okay, it's just the other three sides of the building that they wouldn't be, but that's kind of understandable, given the...
Yeah, and they're doing very, pretty minimal. On the backside of the building, the east, they're doing nothing other than repainting it, so the materials stay the same. The north and south, they're sort of wrapping that west facade around the corners, but that's about the extent of it, just to kind of get that wrap appeal.
Right, but it doesn't extend all the way, just that.
Yeah, so pretty minimal on the, on the sides of the building, but pretty much stat, for lack of a better word, status quo on the other three sides for the most part.
Okay.
Just kind of an updated paint, paint scheme.
Clayton? If, if, if and when the elevations come before council for approval, will we then anticipate an amendment to this table reflective of those changes, locking in those new percentages since they are anticipated as being higher?
Then, as I had drafted it, when we talked about the existing building, was, and maybe this is something that could get inserted for better language, the existing building as, as established at time of adoption of this ordinance, so reflecting that, hey, what it is today, we're, we understand it like that today. The moment you start making changes, it has to come into compliance.
I had the same question that you did, Councilmember Burkhart, and was talking to Christine here. I think when you start reading the first sentence of B, that says, "Any exterior modifications to existing buildings shall result in the architecture being in greater compliance." You know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't update an ordinance every time you do a site plan amendment, but I think that is, the intent of that is, again, is to move it so that they keep moving towards compliance. Now, if you feel like we need to give more specificity to that, to make it clear that you can't go backwards to what is A, and once you make an amendment, I think maybe we could draft something, but I think intention, I think, is pretty clear, at least in staff's mind, that, again, they're, they're supposed to be moving towards compliance even after every modification of the future.
I would agree with that statement.
So if, if A establishes the current snapshot of current building, B then triggers improvements, we would actually have to see then on every facade an improvement for greater compliance to get to 185? And it sounds like we'd be close on the wraparounds, but on the east side, they would also need to do so?
It would only come into play where they're making actual modifications. They're not doing any changes to materials on the east facade, therefore, it wouldn't trigger any requirement for them to make any changes there.
But, but the first sentence of 2B indicates, "Any exterior modifications to the existing buildings shall result in the architecture being in greater compliance with chapter 185." So that, that wouldn't be in greater compliance on each face?
That was not the intent, it's the area of modification.
But that isn't stated in the, in the current ordinance?
And we can certainly clarify that, if it's felt that it's needed to be clarified. The intent here is that, you know, if we look at the building in current conditions, that east facade in particular, it's painted brick. It would be not impossible, but pretty extensive, to change that material out to something that would be in compliance with code. To say, hey, if you make one change on the west side, that automatically triggers you have to make changes all the way on the east that you're not even touching, or just simply repainting.
But we do require that in other developments, correct?
It's only the areas of modification of the building that we look at.
So this B is actually more explicit than, right now, B states that "Any exterior modifications to the existing building." It doesn't say on a specific face. I, I, I want to, I want to make sure that we're treating this the same as we've treated other developments, but at the same point, we're clearly, it doesn't seem like our wording is doing so. So I would entertain some sort of wording to be able to clarify that further.
Clayton, do we have any authority for, that we can cite someplace else that says that, that the modification needs to be made only, or that the update needs to be made only where the modification is being proposed? I mean, it sounds like in practice that's what we do.
The, I'll have to look here really quick while I'm talking. One example that comes to mind is down at Childserv, they had done a connector addition between their facilities a few years back. We had only reviewed the architecture related to the new addition to their, to their structure, not the entire building as a whole, the entire facility. So that would be sort of consistent with how I'm discussing it here, where we're talking about the area of change. Let's see.
It's, Clayton, if I could jump in here, it's 18503. It talks about the stand, that's the architectural standards, and it says that they shall apply to the following sides of new buildings, building additions, or building expansions. So I think that's where you get your authority to, if it's a expansion, you're only looking at the expansion. If they're, if it's a side of the building, you're only looking at a side of the building is in existing code.
I just found that, was going to say the exact same thing.
Yeah.
And this ordinance doesn't, I mean, because it's referencing 185, will, kind of, 185 supersedes anything there, correct?
Yeah, the PUD early on says, you know, the standards where there's any confusion or conflict, it's the existing code that, that controls.
Thank you both.
I'd like to follow up on this line of questioning. What happens when it comes to the exterior site? Like, for example, I think that the sidewalks that are along the street, and I don't know what that interior street is, don't have detectable warning panels. Are they required to bring those up to current standards, especially since the ADA, that's a safety issue more than it is an appearance issue?
If they're making modifications to those areas of a site, then they have to be in compliance. If they're not touching them, they don't need to modify. But the, the PUD wouldn't govern that, that'd be a site plan-related element that you would review.
And that'll be also when we review for landscape standards, because our landscape, I mean, one of the things I heard you say earlier was bringing it up to current standards, but then we're having this whole discussion about which side, whether we, we're looking at the building side by side or the whole building itself, and I somewhat question how we can look at things in terms of the site without seeing the whole thing. But we'll, we will take this up when we look at the site plan review?
Yeah, and the intent was to bring the site plan the same evening that you would consider third reading of this, so you would be able to have both of them on that same agenda. So if for some reason you don't like something, you still have the ability to change the ordinance. And the site plan was provided in your packet as well for reference.
The what was?
The site plan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the site plan, I'm kind of curious, because I think that we've updated our open standards in terms of, open space standards in terms of how many trees we need, et cetera. how many trees we need, et cetera. And, you know, my comment always is, at what point is it that we have this discussion?
They would just be maintaining per their current approved site plan for landscaping.
And have some of these trees died since the approved site plan when this theater was built?
I believe yes. I believe they'd call out a few for replacement, or, but we could certainly further clarify that.
Yeah, I would like, I mean...
But that would just be a replacement back to current approved site plan standards.
Okay.
But we could certainly follow up on that.
I, I get it, and I think that they, I've had conversations with Jesse, and he says he likes trees, so hopefully he will follow up. But back to my other thing is that, you know, the ADA standards have changed in sidewalks, and, but you've said since they don't touch that, even though they are changing sidewalks around the building, they don't have to improve the ones that are out on the street.
Correct, because they're just, they're grandfather.
Okay.
But the areas they are touching have been verified that they would be in compliance with current approved standards for ADA.
All right.
Clayton, in that vein, what triggers some of that other space then to have to come up to com, current standards? I, you, you know, if, if you talk about replacing a dead tree, excuse me, a dead tree, with what was approved at the, at the time, what, can you give me some example, though, of what would trigger them to have to come up to standards on those other aspects?
Really, any area of the site they're touching is what we're looking at and reviewing an existing site. So if they're not touching a buffer area, they just have to maintain to what they're currently approved if...
Is there a radius of touching? I mean, I'm, I'm being, you know, somewhat, let's say they have a curb, you know, there's trees in parking areas and things like that. They have a curb that is cracked and they want to replace it. Is, is that, I mean, because that curb stop touches the grass, and the grass touches the tree, and the green grass goes all around, all around, I mean, to, to what end? I mean, I, I guess I, I just want some clarification for this standpoint.
But David, certainly correct me if you, you have, if you think differently, but really, it's not explicitly called out in code, to my knowledge, that says, within X number of feet of a change, these things need to be considered. Kind of a case by case.
If you were replacing a curb that's cracked, that's maintenance. That's just maintaining your parking lot. If they were going in and replacing an entire section of parking lot, we'd look at that entire part of the site, everything adjacent to it, and size of islands, and size of parking stalls, and all that. But where they're maintaining what's there, it's already been approved. There's no requirement that they increase, increase compliance because they haven't made any changes. And back to the architecture, one thing I'd point out, had the previous owner not painted this building, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, because we changed our code to not allow painted brick. So, I mean, there's, there's actions that have happened out of the fault of the current property owner that were allowed by our old code at the time they happened. And so we're, we're in this situation where we've got a nonconformity that, you know, is kind of unique and would be very difficult to replace, especially on the architecture side of it.
I just want to tell my story here real quick, if I, if you'll indulge me, but, you know, I've lived, I've lived over on that side of town long enough that I saw the AMC Theater built, and it wasn't the AMC Theater at the time. I don't remember what it was called.
Kermic.
But it had all of this beautiful brick all the way around it. I mean, it must have cost a fortune to put that brick on there. And one day, when I was driving down the road, I saw this guy up in this, this...
Lift.
Lift or something, yeah, spraying this ugly yellow, god awful yellow paint on it. And I'm thinking, what in the heck is he doing? So I called Jim Sanders up, and I said, Jim, can he do that? And we didn't have anything in, in our ordinance at the time that restricted them from doing that. So over the course of the next week, I, it was, it was painful to me to drive by and watch them continue to spray that yellow, awful yellow paint on there. So, yeah, if, if, if that hadn't have happened at the time, we'd still have this, you know, this, this huge building with just lots of red brick on it.
I know that wasn't probably the clearest of answers there, but we're looking at kind of the areas of change. Last thing I just kind of want to point out about architecture, C says "Any new buildings or building expansions." There's no grace given there. It just has to be in compliance with code. And if any of the existing, if the existing building is destroyed by 50% or greater of its replacement cost, then it can only be reconstructed in accordance with current code. Those are just relevant sections that are, frankly, they're in code, but I thought it was just important to at least highlight that if a building's getting destroyed, you'd forego A. Yeah, all the other changes in the, in the version that is amended architecture, no signs, is simply just reference updates throughout the code. With that, happy to go further detail into questions. We do have representatives of the applicant. They can certainly provide their input as well, and I do believe you have members of the public that may wish to address the council this evening on this topic.
Any more questions for Clayton?
So Clayton, I, I'm kind of looking at the ordinance, so I'm now on, I don't know what page I'm, but basically, in the staff report, if you scroll basically all the way to the end, before you get to the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes. So it's, it's titled, "Ordinance 1125, Red Line Amended Architecture and No Interstate-Oriented Signs."
Yes.
So that would be the ordinance, the version of the ordinance that if we were to approve something tonight, that we would work off of.
That is what staff would recommend, based on applicant's request.
And there is a section in here that discusses signage, but it doesn't include any of the language allowing for the interstate-oriented monument sign, et cetera. Is that, am I stating that properly? It's...
Correct. This section D, "No Interstate-Oriented Monument Signs Will Be Allowed."
A section...
9D signage?
Okay, right, okay, okay.
We used to call them Interstate High Rise. New terminology is interstate-oriented, so it's just a update of a name to match.
Okay, okay. So in essence, it really does actually have a section on signage, and sort of clearly states that there would not be the allowing of a interstate monument sign, okay?
Hence, the original request as presented, and some of the further actions that are going to be considered by board of adjustment.
It maintains the current language in our ordinance.
Yes.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions for Clayton? If not, does the applicant want to make comments? Or does the council have questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Josh Williams, I'm principal in charge of the project at Slingshot Architecture. I'm here to take questions.
Is, I saw in some of the reading material, a mention of kids' classrooms. Is there intention to have full-time teaching at this church? Will it become a, a school?
That's not the plan right now, or daycare.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, council?
Just, so no plan for daycare, is that what you said?
Correct, not at this time.
Sorry?
Yeah, daycare's not in the plans right now.
I just wanted, I didn't, I'm going to make sure I clearly understood what you said, okay?
So daycare's not in the plans, neither is a full-time school?
No.
Thank you.
Other questions, council?
I, I do have a question, and, and actually, I think it's probably more for staff, but I want you to comment on it. In, in your familiarity with, with our buffer and, is it 182, buffer and screening standards, there is a reference in this ordinance that says that open space shall be provided in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 182, but, but is that, walk me through how you're not impacting that.
Nikki Neal with Civil Design Advantage, 4121 Northwest Urbandale Drive. Got that down.
Easy part, right?
So for the buffer, there is technically a buffer to that east property line, as there is residential along our east property. So the buffer exists today, and when the site plan does officially come through, we are adding to that to officially bring it more into compliance with today's standards. So there are a couple plantings we are adding back there.
All right.
But there is an existing berm, and there is already existing plantings there today.
Why did you just pick to bring the standards for the berm and the buffer up, and not the rest of the site?
Well, knowing that, A, there's residential to that east side, and now this building will be in use today, and there is more activity, say, that would happen along that backside, we thought that would be a nice place to kind of at least help with the community and add that buffering, so. So I'm just saying, if we're going to pick and choose somewhere, that's probably our most logical place, that it makes sense to add it.
Okay. Council have any other questions for the applicants? Okay, thank you.
Yes, and so we are going to table the signage, and we are officially going to appeal and move through the zoning Board of Adjustment.
What are you appealing?
For the signage, the, I can pull up the email, sorry. The official determination from the zoning administrator per this email for the steeple element.
So you're appealing, you're appealing to determination of what zoning administrator?
So there is a code interpretation disagreement. So the, there, in the packet, the staff considers it a sign, the large Jesus with the tower beneath it. I think the church considers that part of the steeple or part of the building, and that it's not a sign. It's more like a cross that you would find on top of a church. And so there are different regulations that would apply depending upon whether it truly is a sign, or whether it truly is a decorative religious tower. And so that issue will go to Board of Adjustment for their resolution.
Okay.
And then, depending upon how that is resolved, it will move forward.
Okay, so I just was, it was unclear to me.
Yeah.
Because obviously, that wasn't how it was going to be presented, so, okay, so that's what you're, that's your, the basis of your appeal, okay?
Correct, yep.
And in the meantime, Christine, the request for a modification to the PUD ordinance on, on the signage, that would just, that will just...
So if...
On hold.
If Board of Adjustment agrees with staff's interpretation, that's already gone to P and Z, that issue, considering it a sign. And so that could come back to council then for your formal consideration. If Board of Adjustment disagrees with staff and considers it something else, then we may need to procedurally review it in a different fashion.
But it would come, it would follow the normal Board of Adjustment process?
Yes.
Which is, if the Board of Adjustments judge, whatever, whatever decision the Board of Adjustment makes, it comes to the council with an opportunity to remand that, just like the typical Board of Adjustment.
Right, like any other Board of Adjustment.
That's what I'm just making sure that it follows all that process, so. And in essence, even though the language that will be in this ordinance tonight regarding a sign is immaterial, because they're saying it's not a sign, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay.
But if the Board of Adjustment determines that it is a sign, then it comes back to us.
Yes, because then it would be regulated as a highway-oriented sign.
But it would only come back to us if they wanted, if they had made a new request to amend what we're adopting tonight?
That is what, originally, their request, they want to have the steeple slash sign. And so under the current ordinance tonight, it would not be allowed if it is a sign. So that would have to come back to you to permit it as a sign.
Right.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item?
And just one further point of clarification, mayor, sorry.
Okay.
So if it is not a sign, and if it is considered a, you know, decorative religious tower, steeple, then it would be regulated by the existing code, which does include height restrictions, although there is the opportunity to request a variance to exceed those height restrictions. So that would be how that could potentially play out, if that's the way Board of Adjustment decides it.
Christine, while you're, while we're picking your legal brain here, can you talk a little bit more about that section three, nope, section 8D, where it references, "Open space shall be provided in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 182"?
You say 8D, is that 8D of what?
Of the ordinance, I believe.
What we're considering for tonight?
Yes, ordinance, proposed ordinance 1125. Is there something in 180, Chapter 182, that again, and, and I'm leaning on you from the standpoint of, that indicates that, that only specific areas that are impacted by change need to be reflective and held in accordance with that chapter?
I'll have to look at the code here. I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm not 100% sure. I mean, again, there's the code, and then there's, you know, staff's interpretation and application of the code. And so sometimes where the code is not crystal clear, then we really rely on, well, what has been our historical interpretation? How have we applied this to other properties? And we want to make sure we're being consistent.
Yes.
So if it's not crystal clear in the code, my assumption is, you know, staff has viewed it as what part of the site is being modified.
Okay.
But I can do a quick look here, and if I find something, I'll, I'll pipe up.
Thank you.
Yeah, and is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? Okay.
It's unmute.
Have you opened it up?
Okay.
Am I muted?
Could you please state your name and your address?
Yes, I'm Roxanne Hous. I live at 5345 Carter Court.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just have a question on the signage. I know I, if I understood what you said, so they're, they're appealing what you just, so they're appealing the signage, right? Is that correct? Can you hear me?
Yes, the, the attorney is going to respond to your question.
Yes, the applicant is appealing the staff's determination that
Okay.
there is a sign on the site.
Okay, so, yeah, because I, I sent an email on all of this, you know, I hope you guys all got it. Okay, so my question is this, if it comes back to, so if they, if they get it appealed, and then, so then we can come back, and then we can come back and complain about it, I mean, you know, and say our concerns again to you guys? Is that correct? Because then it will come, it will come back to you guys again if they, if they, if this, if they okay it. I'm a little confused on this.
So the Board of Adjustment meeting where the appeal will be heard is a public meeting, so anybody is welcome to come to that meeting.
Okay.
And then, and then once Board of Adjustment makes their decision, that decision comes to the city council to either remand or not remand. So
Okay.
that will be included on a future city council agenda. And then, depending upon how that issue is resolved, it very well may come back to council... And then depending upon how that issue is resolved, it very well may come back to council for formal action, which would also be on an agenda.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and how do we stay in the loop on that?
Yeah, Clayton with the Development Department said you can reach out to him and he can let you know what the status is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Cindy, is there anyone else online? Okay. Again, I'll ask one more time, is there anyone else that would like to address the counsel on this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 1125?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Nicole Vogt, please.
Councilmember ready?
Yeah.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item X?
So hold.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Nicole Vogt, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. We'll take up item X as the first item under the non-consent agenda, and that is to consider agree consider agreement with Bolton and Mink for the professional consulting services for the streetscape beautification framework plan.
And I would just comment, the council member Martin asked that we pulled this off consent agenda, so I'll have Matt give an update on this item.
Yes, so the streetscape beautification framework plan is for the streetscape that was on the strategic goals for the city council. And that's really, you know, looking at the standard treatments that can be implemented in the right of way or public spaces adjacent to the right of way. You know, we look at planning and landscape, hardscape and pavements, location of gateways or monuments, as well as furniture and other site amenities. And really, what we're what the agreement looks at is we'll kind of break those down so that they can be applied by type of street. So we look at your arterials, your collector streets or your residential streets. And we we basically are the we look at those classifications and then we can work those into future projects, which has been stated that or that's the desire is when we're doing a project, we we would put those treatments in at that time versus trying to retrofit them in in later. So that consists of public engagement, conceptual design and planning and cost estimating. But that's kind of what the streetscape beautification plan does. I think there was a question also on the strategic plan, there is the Merle Hay beautification plan, which my understanding was they were two separate plans. One, really, the Merle Hay beautification plan really looks at that corridor, really from building to building and everything in between. So you look at the utilities, the trails, you know, it will pull from some of that streetscape on what you could put in the right of way and some of those treatments. But it really looks at, you know, really that defined corridor versus more of a general broad look across the city based on that street type. So be happy to answer any questions.
So counsel, I know that we've all I know that we've talked about streetscapes for a while and that we have talked specifically about the Merle Hay corridor and how important it is to the presentation of the, you know, the feel as people come into the city of Johnston. And we also know that we've invested quite a bit in, not only us, but other people have invested quite a bit in the Merle Hay corridor. And my thoughts on this and the reason I had it asked for it to be pulled off of the consent agenda was just to have a little bit of clarification from the mayor and fellow council people about where we want to go with the Merle Hay portion of this. If you look at this contract, and I'm not opposed to this contract, I just want you to know, I'm very much in favor of this contract. But my concern is we we still, after I read through this, we still didn't have someone working specifically on providing us ideas specifically for the Merle Hay corridor. And I believe that there are business people right now that have businesses along Merle Hay, the dentist office, who are waiting for some guidance from the city about what what we our intentions are, because we've been talking about this Merle Hay corridor for years. And we haven't given them any guidance and we haven't given them any ideas because we've been waiting to hire a designer. So again, I'm very much in favor of this. This I've read through the contract a few times, not in depth, not with a microscope. But basically, it says, one, the designers are going to investigate our current city ordinances and what they say about streetscapes. And then they're going to do some meetings with staff, meetings with the the public about what what people want to see in terms of this overall, what what makes a beautiful city in terms of their streets, whether it's trees or signage or banners or whatever. Then they're going to come up and they're going to do some concepts, three to five concepts, maybe more than that. And they're going to do concepts on different sized roads. Like you're going to do a streetscape for 86th Street and it's going to be different than the streetscapes you get from North Glen Drive because they're different arterie they handle different traffic. So they're going to do some study and studies like that, they're going to bring them back to us. And then we're going to say things like, we like this kind of thing and we don't like that kind of thing, or we're going to put them together. They go back and they refine it. And then basically, at that point, they will provide the city with some updated ordinance language that we can incorporate. So as we go be go ahead, and I'm shortening a lot, as we go forward, they're going to use this, they're going to use this language in this booklet to inform as areas get developed, how they should set up the streetscapes. All great stuff. What I'm thinking that we should have a conversation is, are we in favor as as a council and a mayor? Did we not want to also move ahead the Merle Hay corridor at the same time? And it could cost us almost as much as we're going to be paying for this study. But I feel like we're losing time and I'm I just feel like we need to at least get some kind of concepts, some sort of study of specifics along the Merle Hay corridor so that we can present these to our business people and say, hey, we don't, we're not kicking it off next year, but we're we have plans and we want to work with you. And we want, we all want this corridor to look great. So I guess what I'm asking of council and mayor is do we need to do we need to ask Matt to also include these things into this design package? Or or we're good with what we've got? Because right now, I don't know that it's on any kind of schedule to get done, the specifics of the Merle Hay streetscape. I hope I explained that clearly.
It was a great explanation. I think you've got everything correct. There is in the strategic plan, there is an action item for the Merle Hay beautification plan, project and scope and funding it. It's not funded at the moment to do that. But there is outlined in that action plan or the agenda tractor tracker that there is, you know, we got defined scope and cost, and that starts really next month in November. So there is a plan for that, it just starts later. But if we want to see if we can get some cost savings, we can do an amendment to this agreement at a later date if we want to hire the same engineering firm or we want to keep them separate. Because really, you're going to pull from some of this, some of the streetscape for the beautification of Merle Hay from this plan.
You should be, yeah, it's one of our streets.
Because this is more of a general overview of the entire city is what we're approving tonight. And then Merle Hay is really more, you're looking at that corridor.
That corridor and where there are green spaces along it that can be utilized and where there are brand new buildings that have already set up there, you know, and and so there's not an opportunity there to make changes, 100%. I mean, what I'm looking for, and I'm again asking for the council to sort of chime in, is, yeah, how about we get some concepts that we can start sharing or discussing? And we could work with this landscape architecture firm to do that specifically for Merle Hay Road.
Well, I I sort of recall that when we talked about this at the the strategic planning process that we went through that kind of helped to kind of figure out, okay, here's what we're doing in 2025 and here's what we're doing in 2026 and here's what we're doing in 2027, that these two were kept separate. That was my recall of it, because we did talk, I remember talking specifically about, because these two seem similar, are they the same, are they separate? And so to me, I thought I sort of felt like we kind of had that conversation at that point. I do, I I get what you're saying, that we need to make sure we don't we don't get these two projects get too far separated. And it would be helpful, I think, to understand, you know, what the timetable is for this project and then what the timetable is for the Merle Hay specific project. And, you know, how close they are together and how that works. But as I recall, they're they're sort of separate.
I would agree that we discussed this, and I don't remember the exact wording, but that there were two different objectives. One was one was setting standards and the other one was specifics. But I also feel like of the that we prioritize not just the setting the standards, but also specifics on the Merle Hay Road as being both very important to us. You know, we had a few things on that list that were going to be very high priority and this one is is up there. So if we go through what we're hiring Bolton Mink for, that's at least a year's worth of stuff. And so then we're a year behind, then we're, you know, at that point, I so that's my thought is, yeah, well, maybe we could get a specifics, a little bit of specifics. I mean, not like we're going to take it to a civil engineer and say, the sidewalk is this width. But if we could at least get some envisioning to share with business owners and show them what we're looking at and get some feedback, I think it'd be good for us, good sale, good communication.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just trying to does are we, I I'm concerned about combining them because I think in the end, we may not get as robust, especially on the Merle Hay side. Because I the this study, to me, is going to kind of get a little bit into the weeds on, you know, width of right of way and types of street, trees and different types of things that are I I think will be hard to maybe capture our imagination, let alone the citizen's imagination. And I really want to make sure we have we fully put the time and effort into the Merle Hay because I think that is probably what's going to produce a stronger work product that we're going to probably notice at the end of the day.
Matt, can you talk to us a little about a little bit about timeline? Because I think we all, you know, we we all share Rhonda's Rhonda's concerns about, you know, making sure that that we don't lose the Merle Hay beautification project and all of this. And and, you know, and I agree, I mean, it's something that we've talked about for years now and we'd all like to see it happen. You know, particularly as as Merle Hay Road continues to be built out and we don't want to miss opportunities. So can you talk to us a little bit about that timeline? And I mean, how long is this study going to take? Is there some opportunity for overlap and?
Yeah, though they will, there will be some overlap, you can see on the screen. This is the timeline that's on that agenda tracker that that we share with counsel. You can really see that we've interviewed the design firms and really we've we've selected it. Tonight was to kind of get to hire them and get them on board. And then they start their work identifying those areas for streetscapes. We we include treeboard, park board, public works, ad hoc, then we bring that back and have a work session. And then we have public input meetings. And you can see that that all runs through from October through November, December into January. And they really kind of refine some of those public input meetings. And then we come back in March and look at some of those preliminary design concepts, have more, have another public meeting. And then we kind of select those design concepts to move forward with.
So that would be finished, the whole the whole process would be completed by April?
The whole process, so we we select that concept that moves forward in April and then they go back and refine that. We would have that by the end of June, first of July. And then you can see the Merle Hay beautification plan, the project and scope. Really, we're just kind of defining what the scope of that project is, getting some costs, have a work session to get more direction on what council is looking for.
When do we anticipate that to happen?
That would happen later this year in December.
Is there any way somebody could blow make that larger? Because it looks like to me it's what December of 2024, but it's hard to read.
It, yeah, the work session is planned for December of 2024.
There we go, thank you. And this is on the Merle Hay specific timeline?
Yep, this is the Merle Hay. You know, we prepare a budget proposal to try and get in next year's budget. That would be one of the new projects that would be forthcoming that we haven't talked about in the CIP just yet. And then, you know, we would include that in the presentation and discussion for the budget workshop in January and then get that placed into the budget so that we can then, once we have the streetscape project done, we have this budgeted for the following year, we can pull from the completed streetscape on what you want to put into that Merle Hay beautification project as well.
So what I'm hearing you say, we wouldn't have any funding for the Merle Hay Road study until July of next year?
Yeah, if that's where we place it in the priority list, it would be July of next year.
So if I can interject, I mean, one one thought I think is what I'm hearing from Rhonda is, you know, in in the scope of the larger streetscape project, citywide streetscape project, let's do some specific work along Merle Hay. What this project that's later in the really looking for funding for this next fiscal year is really kind of that detailed level as we look forward to doing the complete street rebuild of Merle Hay going into future years. But I think as part of this project, I mean, we can talk with Bolton and make it probably a pretty small change of saying, hey, let's start, let's do some cross sections, pick a couple locations along Merle Hay and start developing kind of a kind of overview, kind of detail for those cross sections. I think we can do that pretty easily in the scope of the citywide streetscape and what's the flair we want on Merle Hay Road. But then as we we look at then going to that next step of really doing that detailed work, you know, it's it's going to, you know, we're going to need more funding to do that. And so I I think it's it is two separate project as we we first take on the citywide and kind of what is that view for throughout the entire city. But then I think, again, I'm looking at Matt, I mean, I think we could pretty much be pretty easy to integrate some concepts for Merle Hay if that would meet your expectations.
It's almost like what maybe Jim Evans would kick in on this, it's called charrette, you know, where you get people together and you look at a site, you look at the overall Merle Hay Road and you you talk about possibilities and then you throw some you throw some marker on a paper and do some quick cross sections and then but what it does is you get fired up and excited about these designs. And from that, you start all talking about the same, you have the same images in your head. And I think then we can we can talk about budgets and we can all relate to what we're looking at and what we're going to have and realize that it's worth worth achieving. So 100% agree that it could, in a small way, could be added to this contract for additional fee. But some specifics along Merle Hay Road would make me a lot happier and I would think that the the council too would make find them useful, very useful.
And to your point, I think, you know, it would be good to be able to start sharing that with businesses along Merle Hay Road so that, you know, they don't get ahead of us in doing something that later doesn't fit with.
And then and then we have to say, no, you shouldn't have repaved your whole parking lot because we wanted to put in some islands so we could do X, you know.
Yeah, I would suggest if we if we take that approach, we're going to want to look at the areas where we already have trail and utilities underground. We probably don't want to do that in the section that's in between because we don't have trail in between 55th and 60th. And we're going to be having to push back or acquire some property in order to put trail in. And then when we, once we bury utilities, we're going to have to find areas for switchgear and transformers, those types of things. So I think you can, almost like it'd be a bookend project up near 62nd and a and Merle Hay and then down 55th and Johnston Drive down in that area as well. But yeah, we can, I can talk to the But, yeah, we can, I can talk to the consultant, and we can see what that would be back, or see what that would cost and bring back, bring that back to the council.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
So will we table discussion of this item to, well, if we're going to amend the contract? Or do you need to amend, does it require an amendment, what you have described, Mike, does that require an amendment of the contract?
It will, but I I think, what I would suggest is we, we start moving forward so we can begin the work. And then we'll bring, I think we have good direction from here tonight, and we can bring forth an amendment based on that.
So approve it, but then we'll bring an amendment. Okay, okay.
So do we have a motion to approve the agreement with Bolton and Mink?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Nicole, vote please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Evans.
Motion passed. Item 7A, consider approval of resolution number 24-2244, approving the site plan for the Beale Building addition located at 7150 Northwest 70th Avenue.
Corteva has, Corteva submitted a site plan for a 3,500 square foot expansion on the southwest corner of the Beale Building. This expansion will create additional office space, growth chambers and conference rooms. The comprehensive plan identifies the future land use of this property as public slash semi-public. And that's described in our comp plan as, includes uses that place a special emphasis on job retention creations such as professional offices and services. Employment areas also include lots of parcels containing showrooms, warehousing and light industrial uses with associated office functions. So as proposed, this site plan is in compliance with the Drive 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The subject property is zoned agricultural reserve. And the setbacks are off of Northwest 70th, the front setback is 75 feet. The side setbacks for the east and west property lines are 50 feet. And then that rear setback from the south property line is also 75 feet. As proposed, the, the site is in compliance with all of those bulk regulations as well. The proposed construction area includes 11 trees exceeding that six inch caliber diameter. Eight trees are proposed to be preserved with three trees proposed to be removed to support the installation of that, the addition. They are, three trees are proposed to be replanted toward the, on the northwest by the, by the parking lot, as shown in the site plan. Section 181.03. B of our code states that when the entire lot is not being developed, the open space requirement shall be based upon maintaining the specified percentage of open space within the boundaries of the improved, the improved portion of the lot. That area is roughly 110,089 square feet in size. The site is required to designate 50% of that as open space. And as proposed, the site is in compliance with 76,288 square feet, so roughly 69% of the open space requirement, with the requirement being 50,045 square feet. Section 181.04.7 states that outside of the required buffer area, the preservation of protected, of a protected tree on the City of Johnston's desirable species list shall be credited in caliber inches toward landscaping requirements. To calculate the preservation, to calculate the credit for preserving existing trees on the site, staff assess the minimum size requirements that we have in our code for the different species and the different types of trees that we have. To calculate that credit, we, for example, if the minimum height for an evergreen in our code is five feet, if there is an evergreen on this property that's 55 feet tall, we took that 55 feet, divided it by our minimum size, so that would be roughly 11, 11 trees. The required number of open space plantings, the, in provided number of open, is in that table below. As of right now, it meets all of those open space and landscaping requirements. There's no buffer required for this property, and the site is assessed off of Northwest 70th Avenue. The intended use of the site is business office with a requirement of 95 parking spaces, and it's providing 99. The site is serviced off of city water off of Northwest 70th with sanitary sewer internally being private. And then the, the property is not located in a FEMA floodplain. As we kind of stated earlier, chapter 185.03 lays out the requirements of where architecture standards apply. In that list, D says all facades facing within 300 feet of a public street in, in an A, in an AR or M district. This, the proposed building is greater than 300 feet from a public street in an AR district, so those architectural standards don't apply. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval. I know we have the architect here who can answer any questions, and I can answer any additional questions you guys have as well.
Counsel, any questions for Jacob?
A quick question here. Can you show me on the map where exactly this building is?
Yes.
This one does not tell me much.
So if this is Northwest 70th, this is that gate towards Fort Dodge, right here. So it would be this little highlighted section right here for you.
All right, thank you. That helps.
I had some problems figuring out where this was too. So it would have been helpful if the street had been named on the map. No.
I thought I had done that.
I saw the, I, I recognized the Camp Dodge entrance by looking at the north, but it was, it took me a minute. Thank you.
Other questions for Jacob? I don't have a question, Jacob, but I just want to say to Corteva, I appreciate the fact that they're continuing to look for opportunities to invest in our community. Please, please share that back with the, the folks at at Corteva. Any other comments, counsel? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 24-244?
I move.
Second.
A motion and a second, further discussion. Nicole, vote please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider first reading of ordinance number 1124, amending the Johnson Revitas ordinances of 2007 by amending section 29.08 to modify parking on Northwest 92nd Court. Is that good, Jacob?
Yes, sorry. So staff has received a request to establish a no parking zone on Northwest 92nd Court. We sent a survey out to area residents to get their opinion on establishing that no parking ordinance. We sent it out to 26 people. We received 12 responses. Those, the survey included two questions. The first question was, do you support the establishing a no parking ordinance on the north and east side of Northwest 92nd Court? Of those 12 responses, we got 11 yeses and one no. And then the second question was, do you have any additional comments with, to share with the, the topic? The main recurring theme that we got in those additional comments was, it's hard to park when both sides of the street are, are, have cars parked on them. That was the main one. The responses received indicate that the majority of the residents support the establishment of a no parking zone or zones along Northwest 92nd Court. This first image shows what the current regulations are. The red is the no parking, the green are those areas of where parking is allowed. And then if we show this image, it would just be that full. So the, the west side would be, still have a lot of parking, would just be that east and north side would not be allowed parking. The only cost would be the cost of signage. Staff recommends approval. I can answer any questions you have as well on this.
Counsel, have any questions for Jacob on this?
So Jacob, I was confused about, it it took me a long time to figure out which part of Northwest 92nd Court this is. Because if you, I have friends who live along Northwest 92nd Court that goes, is north of this, right? So there's a segment of Northwest 92nd Court.
So it would be, sorry, as, as, it would be between the, section would be between Northwest 92nd Court, between Northwest 93rd Street and then Northwest. So it would only be this little section here. So it would be.
Right, but Windsor, there's like several Windsors in Johnston, right? There's Windsor Parkway.
It'd be Northwest Windsor, sorry.
Right, but it, so it, so I, so first of all, I think it's worded in a way, it, so for instance, if you, if you would, there's a Northwest, there's a segment of Northwest 92nd Court that runs between Windsor Parkway, directly north of there. And I, that runs into Summit Street, so I guess it is a distinction. But it was just kind of, the wording on it was a little confusing to me. Second of all, what, what, do we know what the width of this street? Because that usually comes into play sometimes when we're talking about, is it, is it?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, so it's a more, it's a narrower street. Okay, okay. That's all, just, that's, those are always one of those things, it's helpful to know, is it 26 as opposed to 29 feet? Because a 29 feet street, 29 foot wide street.
Makes a little bit easier to park on both sides of the street.
I get that the neighbors are supportive of it, but they're, to me, I like to know how, why the street is, the types of homes we're dealing with here, are these two car garages, three car garages? If there are a lot of houses with three car garages, the driveways are wider, there's more room to park the cars in the driveway. So that, so there's less pressure to park on the street. And so the, the, those are some things to, in a future staff report on these types of issues.
I'll make sure to include those.
I appreciate just a little bit more digging into, and I apologize, I should have asked you those questions before. I didn't realize this item was on the agenda tonight.
No, I appreciate you letting me know. That helps me.
Review of the agenda earlier this afternoon, but, so those are all kind of, kind of some of the factors. I'm happy to support it tonight, given the fact that the neighbors are supportive of it, and that is a factor that I think is important. But I do think there's other factors we always have to look into on these things too, so.
I will take blame for not putting street labels on the map because I made the pass.
Okay.
We both, we both made that error.
Yeah, that would be helpful, it, it, because it is, it took me a long time to finally find it. So it is helpful to have those, especially in this area where you have Windsor Parkway, Windsor, Northwest Windsor.
There's a lot of similar names.
It is, it's, it's.
You're absolutely correct. That was my error.
I appreciate you saying that, clean. So anyway, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance, ordinance number 1124?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Nicole, vote please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Evans.
Motion passed. Next item is to receive and file the 2425 Strategic Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the council is aware, we've been working diligently to prepare this new strategic plan, which is now complete. You know, we've been meeting with Mr. Wile Summick of, Wile Summick and Associates to develop this strategic plan. As you recall, the council did review this during their September 3rd work session. Since then, staff did meet with Mr. Summick on October 1st via Zoom to complete kind of a review of the strategic plan. We did make some minor changes on dates, and those have now been reflected in the documents that are before the council in the packet. Just to, to recall, we did include in their, the action plan. So that action plan does detail each of the various goals and action steps. Additionally, it does have timelines on when each of those action steps will occur. Communications Department did a great job, and I appreciate Janet for her work on developing kind of the 2024, 2025 Strategic Plan summary, which was included in the packet. There was a small revision that Janet did make, appreciate her work on that to reflect the changes that the council requested at the September 3rd meeting. And then finally, the agenda tracker, which actually we seen in use this evening, has been updated with all those changes. Additionally, as requested by the council, it has been loaded, loaded into the library within Board Docs, and staff will make a, a point to update that. Just recall, that tracker includes what category, so is it a policy item that the council and mayor is responsible for? Will have frequent touchbacks? Or is it just a management item, something that routinely wouldn't come back to council for review? The responsible party, each action item, and then all the activities and milestones under that, kind of the dates that each of those activities will occur, and then a current status on each of those items. Is it, is it complete? Is it in progress, or there's some disruptions? So I'm not going to go through this since we did review it in detail on September 3rd. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, what staff is recommending the council receive and file the final 2024, 2025 Strategic Plan. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions for Mike?
Yeah, I guess the only question I would have, Mike, is, so I'm looking at this document, I think it's, this is a document that, that this city logo is on, so I presume this is the document Janet prepared, that talks about the 2024, 25 Strategic Plan. And in, for instance, at somewhere down here, it talks about dog park projection, project bid and construction. And earlier tonight, we went through and moved around some different CIP items. So I just would, this is, if there's anything that we were planning to do in '25, and now we've kicked it '26, we might want to make sure that that's, that these are accurately reflected in that. Because it's, we've got a lot, there's a lot of things on here, and just from a communication standpoint, it'd be helpful to, even for our own good understanding of, here's what we plan to do in '24 and '25, and any items that got kicked at '26.
Yep, in the document that Janet produced, you know, there are items on there that do go beyond 2425. You know, but it's kind of a listing of all the different items within the horizon that that do have steps. When you look at the action agenda, you know, staff did spend time again with Wile on October 1st. So we went through each item and each action step.
Okay.
And milestones. So we did update those, so those should be reflective.
Okay.
And up to date.
Great, thanks.
Great question.
Any other questions for Mike? If not, do we have a motion to receive and file the Strategic Plan?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Nicole, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhart.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7D, consider resolution number 24-248, establishing private properties to be designated in the 2425 Urban Bow Hunt Program. David.
Good evening. Carrie Allen of our Parks Department is handling the bow hunt program this, this year, but I'm covering for her tonight on this item. You've already previously, at a previous council meeting, approved the public areas for bow hunting. And so we also allow bow hunting on private property, subject to a significant number of restrictions and an application process. Carrie did reach out to all of the property owners who've previously been hunted. And we had two wish to return this year, and we have a new property owner, the Iowa Nebraska Equipment Dealers property over on Northwest 54th Avenue. And so those are the three that are proposed for private hunting this year. We went through all the notification requirements and all of those things. And to my knowledge, have received no public comment on any of these three areas. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, counsel?
So the Nebraska, Iowa, Nebraska, is that pretty close to 54th?
Yeah, it's on 54th, but they own a large parcel behind their building. So there's an area, the area that would allow hunting is shown on the, on the map that's attached.
And I, is there, if you're, so you're, can you, the area that's permitted for hunting, you can't find, let's say you're on the northern border there, you've got to be shooting to the south?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions for David? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 24-248?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Nicole, vote please.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7E, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,728,945.88.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Nicole, vote please.
Councilmember Coop.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Motion passed. We've already had city administrator staff comments, city council comments. Is there anything else to come before the council's meeting? Christine.
I have a follow up to Councilmember Burkhart's question from earlier. Jacob, in his presentation, actually answered the question, so I thank him for that. Jacob, in his presentation, actually answered the question, so I thank him for that. The open space requirements in the city code does say, when the entire lot is not being developed, the open space requirement shall be based upon maintaining the specific percentage of open space within the boundaries of the improved portion of the lot.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.